This June regular council meeting to order. Before we start, we're going to have our colors presented. So at this time, will the Boy Scouts troop number three come in?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now at this time, I'd like to welcome Tara Dockerty, who's going to sing our national anthem.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight All the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Okay, before we get started, I just want to thank A.J. and Matthew for being here this evening from Troop Three. I'd like to thank Tara for her lovely singing this evening. Dockerty was, came in and sang for us this evening. Tara, thank you. And I want to thank Bill Pezza, who worked along with council to make this event possible tonight. So Bill, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to start out with honoring two firemen who put over 50 years, or 50 years or more, service, dedicated service into the borough. And at this time, I'm going to call up our mayor, Joe Saxon, and our emergency management coordinator, Merle Winslow. Merle, if you can give us an overview on the two firemen. Right here.
I'd like to have Herb come up to Herb's slide.
Herbie.
Ralph asked me to talk a little bit about the two firemen that are being honored tonight. I've known them for all their lives, I think. We'll start with Bill. There's nothing more important than communications in a municipality, whether it's police, fire, or EMS. And Bill started his electronics trade when he was in the Navy. And both of our honorees tonight, the firemen, are swabis, okay? Bill was in the Navy and Ronnie was in the Coast Guard. So the only difference between a Navy fireman and an Army fireman is that the Navy firemen, they get to have drills every day with the hose and things on the ship. And the Army guys, they have to start from scratch when they go into the fire service. But Bill started, he was a radio repair person for the borough, starting in 1970. And they finished building the Grundy Towers over here in 1972. And at the time, Bill, I think Bill joined the Moose early on. And back in 1972, the Moose had a problem and they were going to get new refrigeration for the Moose Lodge on Ratcliffe Street. So the big cooler that they had downstairs, they were getting rid of. So Bill, the genius that he is in electronics, he said, you know, he said, I think a good building up on top of the Grundy Tower would be excellent because that's the highest point it descended to county. So they took it apart and the manager gave the okay to have Public Works pick up the building. And they took it up to the top of the Grundy Tower, piece by piece, put it together. And that's where all of our radio equipment is today, the repeaters and so forth and so on. And Bill's been working on those things every time there's a problem. He's done work in all the police cars, the ambulances, the fire trucks, and he's always available when called. Now I'll go to Ron. Ron joined Consolidated Fire Department back in 1968. He started as a junior member. And from '68 to '70, he was at the firehouse in all of his spare time getting on the job training. And he lived on Lafayette Streets. And back in those days, we had the cowhorn up on top of the chimney here, and it used to put those numbers out to let you know where the location of the fires were. So if there was a fire uptown, Ron lived in the 400 block of Lafayette. He'd run down to the corner of Pond Street and watch for the engine to come. He'd hop on the truck and go to the fire. The only problem was if we had a fire down this end of town, he didn't get there. He's gone through the ranks over the years. He's been a lieutenant, he's been a captain. And I believe it was '84, he became chief. And he's taken different chief positions over the years. And right now, he's a battalion chief in Consolidated Fire Company downstairs. Ron also has 16 years in as my deputy coordinator for emergency management. He works at the water plant, he works shift work. When we had Superstorm Sandy, I was here early on in the morning, and he worked midnight shift. And as soon as he was done, he came over here and he said, I'm going to relieve you. And I said, are you sure? I said, you just got done working? And he said, no. So we had cots set up here, and I was able to get about six hours sleep. Then he went home and went to bed and then went back to work. These are two of Bristol's best. We have quite a few, but they're great guys. They're always there. They know the true meaning of the word volunteer. And I'm a single child, and Ron, Ron and I have bonded over the years. He's like a brother to me. Billy, every time I need something electronically, I call him up, he takes care of it. So that's basically what I can tell you about these two guys. I wish I had 20 more.
I'd like to share also the fact that I've had the opportunity to work with both of these gentlemen over the last 50-some years as brother firemen. I can't say enough about them, the work ethic, and the fact that they've decided to put this time in for this long of a period of time at no pay. Ask Bill Ferguson to come up. Bill and I happen to belong to the same fire company, so I know a little bit more about him than Ronnie, but not too much more. We're going to have a certificate of recognition tonight. Borough Council of Bristol County of Bucks recognizing Bill Ferguson for 50 years of active volunteer service to Bristol Borough. Bill has been doing voluntary radio repair work for Bristol Borough Police, Fire, Public Works, Water, Sewer Departments, and radio license for the past 50 years. Bill served his country, joined the U.S. Navy in 1967 and returning home in 1970. Bill joined Global Host Company Number Three in 1966 as an active firefighter, now a life member with 53 years of service to our community and county. Presented at 17th Day of June 2019, Ralph DiGiuseppe, President of Council, Joseph Saxon, Mayor of Bristol Borough. Congratulations.
I appreciate the award, and I've enjoyed all 50 years of volunteering for the borough, radio-wise and fire department-wise, and hope to do another 50. Thank you.
Have Ron DeAngelis and his family come up, please. I'm very proud to be giving this accommodation to Ron DeAngelis. When people are in times of trouble, this is a family that steps up to the plate, and I can tell you that from my own experience. Very proud to be friends with you. And I'm going to read the proclamation. The Borough Council of Bristol, Bucks County, recognizes Ron DeAngelis for 50 years of active volunteer service to Bristol Borough. Ron joined the Bristol Consolidated Fire Department at age of 16 in 1968 as a junior fireman. From '68 to '70, Ron got on the job training as a junior member, spending all of his time at the firehouse. From 1971 to '74, he served as a lieutenant. From '75 to '84, he served as a captain. And from '85 to 2004, he was elected to the highest position in the fire company, the rank of chief. From 2011 to 2013, again as a deputy chief. 2014, back as the chief again. Deputy chief from 2015 to 2018. And then 2019 as a battalion chief. Total of 50 years of firefighting service and counting. Total of 16 years as an active deputy emergency management coordinator. Presented the 17th Day of June 2019. Signed Ralph DiGiuseppe and Joseph Saxon.
It's been my pleasure to serve the community. Thank my wife, she's the backbone.
I don't wake them up for fireworks.
Thank everybody here. Thank the chief. It's my pleasure to serve this community, and I've got more years and would continue. Thank you very much.
If you guys just hang around, because we have a couple more things when we're done for you. So don't leave. All right, at this time, I'd like to call up Bill Pezza, Chairman of Raising the Bar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, members of the public. This has been quite a week in America, as the media provided extensive coverage of the significance of the 75th anniversary of D-Day. But sometimes we see history through such a broad lens that we forget that history is made by common people, that wars are shaped not by generals or foreign leaders, but by the kid next door who bears the burden of battle. So we're here tonight to put a more personal face on historic Bristol Borough's contribution to what we know as D-Day. In the early morning hours of June 6, 1944, the United States and its allies launched the greatest amphibious invasion in history. They crossed the dangerous windswept waters of the English Channel to storm the heavily fortified beaches of Normandy. They established a beachhead so others could follow, and began the enormous task of ending the horrific obscenity of Nazi domination of Europe. There is a famous photograph of General Dwight Eisenhower offering encouragement to a group of young paratroopers just prior to their mission. History tells us that as Ike turned away after wishing the troops Godspeed, he had tears in his eyes, knowing that many would not survive that day. Most were just boys, 18, 19, 20 years old, not far removed from high school classrooms just like Bristol High, and about to be thrust into what must have been Earth's equivalent of hell. Given the time difference between Europe and America, when news of the invasion was released at daybreak in Britain, it was still the middle of the night in the United States. But it didn't take long for news to spread. In many cases, church bells awakened people from their sleep, and many left their homes in darkness and flocked to their places of worship where impromptu services were held. You can imagine Bristol residents praying, whether in congregations or in their homes. They prayed for their husbands, sons, fathers, brothers, and neighbors. They prayed that good would triumph over evil. That darkness would yield to light, and that freedom would prevail over Nazi Germany. But most of all, they prayed that their loved ones would survive. Later that day, President Roosevelt led the nation in another prayer. In closing, he said of our troops, "They yearn for the return to the haven of home." Home to Bristol, home to small towns across America. But some did not return, like Bristol resident Nelson Ventorino of Ratcliffe Street, who died on D-Day. One of two sons to Ventorino family would lose in the course of the war. Washington Street resident Louis DiAmbrosio would die six years later, six days later, pardon me, as the fighting continued across France. Others, like Wood Street resident Nick Mancini, would be plagued for the rest of his life by the wounds he suffered that day. Hundreds of Bristolians served in both theaters during World War II. But tonight's observance is specifically about the 75th anniversary of the most momentous military event in American history. The Borough Council and Raising the Bar did our best to compile a list of Bristol Borough residents who were part of D-Day. I'm sure the list is incomplete, but I'd like to read the names sent in by their families and loved ones. You'll recognize some whose names are still an integral part of Bristol's fabric. Richard Beatty Sr., Ernest Pavone, Arthur Damidio, Quindo Jerome, Louis DiAmbrosio, Nicholas Mancini, Harold Snyder, William Sheets, Bernard Amadeo, Joseph Lulinski Sr., Andrew A. Moore Jr., Richard L. Casmiri, Emilio Caucci, and Arthur Straccio. All of them are gone now, but we are blessed to have two others with us and fortunate to be able to convey our gratitude to everyone who participated in America's finest hour by honoring these two men tonight. Will Rogers once said, "We can't all be heroes because someone has to sit on the curb and clap as the parade goes by." Tonight, we're all sitting on the figurative curb, poised to clap, as we welcome two men who served their community and country well. Two quiet heroes who simply did the job they were called to do. Arthur Camerata of Pond Street and Joseph Damidio of Ratcliffe Street.
To bring up Arthur Camerata and Mr. Pezza, you want to bring your family up with you? I'd like to present you with a proclamation.
I would just like to say it is an honor. Obviously, this momentous occasion, I'm a history teacher, and it is not every day that you get to stand next to a hero. You know, we try to get our students to feel history, but they'll never really comprehend, I don't think, this occasion, and this is really an honor. A proclamation of the Borough of Bristol, County of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, recognizing and commending the 75th anniversary of the World War II invasion of Normandy, D-Day. Operation Overlord, honoring Arthur Camerata, a living Bristol Borough resident who participated in the invasion. Whereas the limits and well-being of a community are not in its land or its location, but in how those who live and work in the borough live their lives. And whereas, Arthur Camerata served with the 666th Ordnance Munition Company from May 19, 1943 to December 17, 1945, as PFC with Military Occupational Specialty Telephone and Electrical Lineman. Whereas private Camerata participated in the following campaigns: Normandy, Northern France, Rhineland, Ardennes, the Battle of the Bulge, and Central Europe. He was awarded the Good Conduct Medal, the European-African-Middle Eastern Campaign Medal with five bronze stars, the World War II Victory Medal, and a medal for the Battle of Normandy. Whereas on June 6, 1944, at 1:00 a.m., he boarded a landing craft and crossed the English Channel and landed on Utah Beach. From there, he participated in the advance across Western Europe as the Germans retreated. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the Borough Council honor Arthur Camerata for his exceptional service to our community, duly proclaimed this 10th day of June 2019. Signed, Council President Ralph DiGiuseppe and Mayor Joseph Saxon.
I'm not much of a speaker. I'll take some questions if you wish.
You can have my seat tonight.
Well, it was an honor, and it was a learning experience. It had its good points and it had its bad points. We tried to leave the world in a better condition than it was, and we tried to make it better. I don't know what else to say. Any questions?
I'd like to bring up Mr. Joe Damidio and his family. Mr. Catroci has a presentation for you.
And they were heroes before I knew this part about them. They're always honorable men, always very hardworking, and the ideal citizens. So it's with honor that I present this proclamation tonight. Proclamation of the Borough of Bristol, County of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, recognizing and commending 75th anniversary of World War II invasion of Normandy. D-Day. Operation Overload, honoring Joseph Damidio, a living Bristol Borough resident who participated in the invasion. Whereas the limits and well-being of a community are not in its land or its location, but in how those who lived and worked in the borough live their lives. And whereas Joseph Damidio served on a U.S. Navy landing craft vehicle personal, LCVP, from April 1, 1943 to November 11, 1945, as seaman first class with Military Occupational Specialty Gunner's Mate on a small landing craft. Whereas during Operation Overload, Joe was part of a team of four sailors which manned a small landing craft, also called a Higgins boat or LCVP. These boats transported soldiers from large vessels in the English Channel to the beaches of Normandy. There were many obstacles, which included rough seas, rip currents, mines, inconsistent shorelines, cannon fire, and German soldiers. Joe helped transport Joe helped transport soldiers for more than one week straight with little or no time off. It has been said that without these landing craft, the Normandy invasion would not have been a success. Joe is proud to have served his country and be part of the successful mission that changed the world. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and Borough Council honor Joseph Damidio for his exceptional service to our country. Duly proclaimed this 10th day of June 2019. Signed, Ralph D. Giuseppe, President of Council, Joseph Saxton, Mayor.
I want to thank all of you for showing up. It's really a pleasure. That's all. Thank you.
Before we end our presentations tonight, I want to thank Raising the Bar and their volunteers tonight, and a special thank you again to Bill Pezzio, who without him and the speech he made was very touching tonight. So, Bill, thank you. I guess when you realize what these guys did going into enemy fire and getting off them boats, it just, can't even words, can't even comprehend what they went through. And I also want to thank Sandy Van Dyne Waldron and Casey Waldron, who in the back room along with the Teen Foundation, set up everything tonight for us and- Once this meeting's over, there's cake. I don't know if anybody's seen a couple sheet cakes back there, one with the firemen on it and one with the soldiers that's World War II. So at this time, we have some presentations and proclamations from, I'll bring everybody up at once. So Matt's here from Congressman Fitzpatrick's office. Our state rep John Galloway is here. Our county commissioner Rob Lockery is here. And Nick is here representing State Senator Tommy Tomlinson. So they have some proclamations. If you guys want to speak at the podium, John, if you want to say something.
Thank you for being here, for allowing me to be here today. It is truly an honor. We have proclamations and citations that pretty much go over the same ground, and I guess at some point, council members have pretty much done a good job at saying what needed to be said. There is a couple things I'd like to talk about. There's, I'd like to talk about memories and stories. And nights like tonight, and how important stories and memories are, we have to do a better job at educating, especially our younger generation, the cost of war and remembering, all of us remembering, the great cost of freedom. I read this morning the two Levittown Now articles that were written by Tom Sofield. I thought he did a really good job with both of them. And I was struck by a couple things. First, that both of these gentlemen behind me said the same thing. They both said, "We weren't afraid." And that struck me. That was amazing to me. It's difficult to comprehend everything that we're taught. Greg's a history teacher, I'm a history buff, and I've read everything I possibly could and watched everything I possibly could. And to think that there was no fear on that day. I think Joe said, "You know, when you're 19, you're not afraid of anything." It's difficult. It's very, very difficult. And Carl said something that struck me as well. He said, "The world that we fought for is not the world we live in today." And someday soon, I'd like to sit down and pick his brain and ask him what he meant by that, because I got a couple ideas of myself. So again, thank you very much. Thank you to these fine gentlemen. Thank you to the council for holding this, and have a great night. Take care.
Mr. Damidio, Mr. Camerata, it is an absolute honor for me to be here on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in the County of Bucks, and we have accommodation for both of you. And I just want to pick up on something that Representative Galloway just said in talking about stories. Your service and what you did is incredible. My grandfather served in World War II.
What theater?
He was in Europe, and he passed away just in October of last year. It would have been '94 in January. He served and he was captured. He was a POW. He fought in the Battle of Little Bulge.
The Battle of where?
Little Bulge. So preceded the Battle of Bulge. It was called the Battle of Little Bulge.
It wasn't Market Garden, was it?
So threw me off my game here. I can't ask him now, but the point was this, the Christmas before he passed, the Christmas before he passed, he for the first time shared a story about his, when he got to North Africa, and when he was captured, and when he was liberated. And for 48 years, I had never heard that story, nor did my mom and her sister. And at the end of Christmas, he told it to my three daughters. And we sat there for about 45 minutes, and I'm sure you've shared stories to be able to capture what you were just saying in terms of what it was about and what happened. And I have a daughter now who has just finished her plebe year at the United States Naval Academy, and she's down in Norfolk right now on the USS Oak Hill. And on Thursday, I sent her a copy of the letter that General Eisenhower sent out to the troops that day, and there's a line in that that says that "The eyes of the world are upon you." And I thought about that, and I thought, 75 years later, the eyes of the world are still upon you. Thank you for what you guys did. Thank you for doing this.
I'm running out of room over here. Hi, everyone. My name is Matt Gruda from Congressman Brian Fitzpatrick's office. It's an honor to be here tonight. I know the congressman wishes he could be here. But before I get to the citations and the flags that were flown over the Capitol, Art, you said something right before you went to sit down that really struck me. You said that you wanted to make the world a better place, and that's why you did what you did.
Yeah, we thought we were doing the right thing.
And you absolutely were, and I thank you-
To preserve the lifestyle that we have.
Absolutely. And I think that's something that my generation and all future generations can only strive for. And each person up here tonight that's being honored, I think in their own respect, has made the world a better place. So thank you to each of you for everything that you guys have done, and it's an honor to be here, to honor you all with the flags that we have that were flown over the Capitol. And just to touch briefly on what they are, in coordination with Commissioner Lockery and Representative Galloway, we had two flags that were flown over the Capitol for Ronald DeAngelis and also for William Ferguson. Mr. Ferguson, your 50 years of fire service to the Bristol community as communications officer and radio repair specialist have definitely not gone unnoticed, and it's an honor to be here to present you with that today. I think Ralph has them behind me.
So these flags were flown over the Capitol and are being presented to you guys.
For Mr. Damidio, as well as Mr. Camerata, your bravery, courage, love of country, and unwavering dedication in protecting and preserving the American and French way of life during the June 6, 1944 Normandy D-Day landings. Your legacy will continue to touch and instill confidence in our future generations of leaders. Thank you all very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, esteemed guests. My name is Nick DiAsio. I'm here representing Senator Tomlinson. He's sorry that he couldn't be here this evening at this monumental occasion to honor and remember this tremendous courage and personal sacrifice that both of these gentlemen demonstrated during their service to their country during World War II and their actions during D-Day, the greatest amphibious invasion the world has ever seen. These men were committed to the success of their mission and their duty to country, fellow man for freedom against a battle-hardened, battle-hardened and tested enemy. These men demonstrated tremendous devotion to duty, love for country, and love for fellow man that aided in the success of Operation Overlord and overall victory in World War Gentlemen, Senator Tomlinson had a citation prepared for you in the Senate of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And Mr. Ferguson and Mr. DeAngelis, thank you for your community service to Bristol. It is much appreciated. Volunteer firefighters are on the call every day 24/7. Your hard work and dedication does not go unnoticed. So thank you on behalf of the Senate of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and on behalf of Senator Tomlinson. Thank you.
Do any family members want to come up and take some pictures or whatever you want to do? You can do so, or if you want, once this room clears out and you want to come back in and take some, you're more than welcome.
This is for you. You're not going to be so hard, Eric. Art, you got another one coming.
I've been adjourned.
Get a picture.